Councilwoman Westergaard, do you want to start us off, or has mayor joined?
I think I seen the mayor joined us.
There you are, I apologize. Would you like to kick us off?
Yeah, let's get going.
That's right.
Yeah, good morning, everybody. Let's looking for this update on all the great things that are happening. Jen, kick it to you. Let's get going.
All right, perfect. So similar to last year, we've put together the document that is presented that goes over our priorities, bills that we are registered in support, those that we are registered opposed or undecided, and then bills that are pertaining to us that we have not taken action on yet. Of our priorities that we established, TIF, ATE, and backfill, none of those have seen any legislation yet. It is our understanding that there will be ATE legislation, what that looks like, we don't yet know. So we are trying to learn more about what the ATE bill, whether it'll be a full ban or whether it'll be a bill similar to 2019 that had a somewhat more palatable language for the city as far as being able to continue to use those devices for safety. Any questions on our priorities? All right. The first bill that we're registered in support of is the marijuana offenses bill. A few of you participated in a press conference with the Senate Democrats. This bill would reduce the penalty to a civil penalty and is something that the Marijuana Task Force has been asking for. It is a Senate Democrat-led bill, so the viability probably isn't as strong as it were if a Republican brought the bill just because they're in the minority. I have not heard any minority marijuana bills coming. Doug, do you have any intel on that?
I believe that Dawson and Zahn are still considering doing something similar to what they had last year.
Okay, so that that bill was also utilizing the penalty for possession. So somewhat similar to this bill. The two other bills that the Senate Democrats or Senator Bulcom brought up in the presser a few weeks ago, those have not popped out yet, so we're still waiting to see what those look like and what position we will take as far as the city. Questions on marijuana?
So related to the the bills from from that press conference, I mean, I would assume that unless there's a major flag that we would be supporting those bills as well. Hey, I mean, I think the the full legalization bill we still haven't seen, right?
Correct, it has not come out yet.
And that was the position that we took with our resolution on Monday. So I would assume that we would likely register in support of those two bills, too? Is there any reason why we why we wouldn't based on what's happened thus far?
I guess that's really a question for Scott.
Yeah, and I was just thinking through that because I that's my starting point with the marijuana bills, but I think I I think it'd be helpful if as these come up, if I hear from council members, if there's any reason why there's concern if if there's some if there's any inconsistency. But yes, my starting point is to be supportive of the marijuana bills.
And that would include the the Dawson-Zahn bill, if that if that is introduced in the form that it was last session as well?
I'll want to make sure I read through it, that it's similar. I'm trying to recall what aspects of that one, what what the different elements were on that one, is that it?
I I think that's the one that that essentially admitted a simple, simple misdemeanor and would allow a city to make a marijuana possession and and infraction, essentially a ticketable offense.
Yes, that is correct.
Well, I would I would support us continuing to weigh in on these and to to do what we can to to get others to join. I saw that the city of Iowa City was had weighed in on Senate File 83. Cedar Rapids, it said they were undecided. I know we had a couple of council members from Cedar Rapids that that were part of the group of local elected officials from around the state that that are supportive of these efforts. So if there's a bill or several bills that folks are particularly interested in, I I think it's worthwhile to continue these efforts and to try and grow the number of local elected officials around the state who are interested in working on these issues.
Yeah. One of the concerns, I think, that was voiced earlier, and I would agree with it, is is about having different laws, though one community to the next on marijuana. And so hopefully, as we have those conversations with other elected officials in other cities, that we share that concern with them as well. If it ends up being a Swiss cheese type of enforcement situation, that will just cause mass confusion in the public of, you know, one boundary, one jurisdiction to the next. So hopefully, hopefully, whatever solutions we do end up with, avoid that huge pitfall that that could exist.
Is everyone okay with marijuana? The next bill is the fireworks ban bill. This is introduced by Senator Lofgren. He is a Republican from Muscatine. This would allow a county or city to prohibit the sale and of any kind of fireworks if there's evidence of danger to public safety and health. While there is support in the Republican caucus, there also is a lot of opposition, so it'll be interesting to see how that weighs out and whether this bill moves forward this year. Questions on fireworks? All right. Rental vouchers. This is a bill that popped out late last week. We are registered opposed. We had a long drawn-out battle with this last year, up until signee die. This would prohibit cities and counties from adopting ordinances that prohibit landlords from refusing to accept federal housing vouchers. This would preempt our ordinance, and so we are actively working opposed. We are working with key stakeholders from around the state. We're trying to figure out how this may, if this bill passes, how that may impact the Department of Treasury funds that we just received and and the rollout with impact. So definitely on high alert with this bill. As you know, last year it had opposition in the House, moved out of the Senate, so we will just continue to find our friends in the House, and hopefully, we can stop this bill again.
So Jen, when you reference the the federal legislation, I mean, the it is what you're saying, that this could essentially undercut eviction relief and rental assistance relief efforts using those federal dollars?
Potentially. Chris Johansson is looking into what impact that may have, so I don't want to go on the record saying yes or no until I get a definitive answer from Chris, but I can email the council after.
Yeah, and and I know one of the things, you know, our legal source of income non-discrimination ordinance is broader than than just than just Section 8 vouchers, you know, it would it would cover veterans' benefits and social security and disability, you know, alimony. This is just, I know one of the things, the first bill introduced last year went after all of it. And then the pushback, they narrowed it to just the the Section 8 vouchers, is that correct? Is this just Section 8 vouchers, or is it broader than broader than Section 8?
I believe it's just Section 8, but Jeff, can you confirm that?
I know, the bill that I saw was just Section 8 vouchers issued by the Housing and Urban Development of the federal government. We'll double check and make sure there aren't any other bills out there that are broader than that, but I believe that this particular bill is limited to Section 8.
Federal housing choice vouchers.
Okay, so they don't they don't like choice in this context? Is there a House version?
There is not at this time.
There's one being drafted. We've been working with the committee chair. She's been reading through our ordinances and Iowa City's ordinances to figure out what she really wants to do.
Can this is Connie, can I ask, who is, what is, is it the apartment owners wanting to get this accomplished, or other communities?
Last time I registrations, which I believe was yesterday morning, the two two in support were apartment, large apartment owners.
And landlords. Yeah, so apartment owners.
Could could we ask a question of them, this is Scott, could we ask the question of them, how they differentiate between the COVID assistance and as landlords willing to accept that, but not the Section 8 voucher? And we have families that have economic hardship like what others are seeing with COVID on an ongoing basis. And so I guess it would be helpful to understand how they distinguish between those two sources.
I'm sure they're very anxious to take the COVID money.
I I guess I have a confusion as to why they would accept the funds for that, but refuse the federal funds through Section 8. I just, I'd be real curious as to how they would answer that question, because are they not recognizing the economic hardship that COVID is is putting on people? And that we do have populations, residents that that struggle with those types of fiscal constraints on an ongoing basis? That's why we have the Section 8 type program. I'd just be curious how they would answer that.
I can look more into that for you.
Thank you.
Hotel motel tax, Senate File 50. Doug, do you want to give an update? I know you were in on the subcommittee.
Interesting subcommittee. It was primarily primarily led by the folks who own Fillon Fillonworths in Okoboji and wanting to make sure that funds were being spent from the hotel motel tax on actual tourism-related items. Of course, the statute already requires that, so this was an attempt to put belts and suspenders on the existing statutory language. The subcommittee took the information under advisement, not sure what they're going to do moving forward with with the bill. There is no companion bill in the House.
Thank you, Doug.
Is there is, this is Joe, is there an impact to our budget, Scott, with that? With that bill, if it's changed?
Impact, yes, I guess we I don't think we've had finance look at what all the angles are on it. We can sure, we can sure do that.
Well, I think that would be, go ahead. The bill, the bill would take 50% of the hotel motel tax funds and provide them to a board of of appointed individuals not not responsible back to the council to make decisions on how to spend that 50%.
Yeah, that would be a significant impact. Go ahead, Linda, sorry.
And this is Linda, what percentage of the money is spent on hotel motel tax? What percentage is spent on tourism now?
So that's that's where we would need to look at their definition, because I would say that the CVB money is, and that is two sevens, I'd have to check what that percentage is, but two, two of the 7% goes to CVB. And then we do have probably some of the other spending that that still ends up in the general fund that might qualify as as tourism. And we would have to relook at our Bravo arrangement, frankly, and and whether or not that makes sense to leave that at two sevens. Because it pretty quickly depletes the rest of the hotel motel tax if we have to take out of the three sevens that the city would would retain.
I mean, isn't the argument that Bravo is contributing to to tourism through the the dollars that they use?
Only for their cultural aspects, so some of it, yes, but I do not think that all of Bravo would be able to qualify, as I understand it, under tourism. So we, that's why we'd have to understand better how the first 50% controlled by this new board can be used to continue to support CVB and and Bravo, at least a portion of Bravo. And then what we do with the remaining 50%, is that, Doug, that's how I understood this to work, and it would it would require additional discussion and decision points on what to do with the remaining 50%.
I I really would like to see us dig into that more, because, I mean, the money that Bravo spends, that's that's what brings tourism to our communities by all the things that they're able to do. So I would, I would really hate to to see us change change how it's set up now.
So one caveat, and I don't want to stop the discussions, but I did just pull up the legislative website, and it said the subcommittee recommends a definite postponement. I can check, but I would take that. Forward.
I think under the strictest reading of the of the bill, it would take, require us to take half the money, so if we leave it at the sevens, that it's currently divided by three, three and a half sevens would have to go to this new board that the council doesn't control to spend that money on tourism, and then the city would have contractual obligations for the other two sevens, leaving only one and a half sevens for everything else.
But we'd absolve the CVB contract, Jeff?
No, I think that would be a violation. That's potentially, that's one of the problems with the bill, is it's potentially a problem with the federal contracts clause.
Right.
But if this bill, if this bill moves forward, wouldn't we be in opposition of it instead of undecided?
That's where, that's where I was headed with it, Joe, because it does more harm than good.
Absolutely, it does.
Yeah, I agree.
This is, this is significant enough that where it impacts how we're spending our dollars, I I think that that it's important that if it does move forward, I would think that we would be in opposition.
And we've taken similar strategic moves in the past where this is obviously designed for communities that don't already have CVB and Bravo-type organizations utilizing those hotel motel funds. So we could, we could use a tact where this would not apply to trying to amend it to communities that already have those established at at least 50% of the revenue, and we could show that four sevens of our hotel motel is already established for those two purposes, and therefore, we could be exempted out of it, the entire metro area would. So I, there are there are options strategically that we could go after.
I would definitely keep an eye on 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 this one, Scott.
You will continue to watch it, but as the website says, hopefully, it is dead for the session. I think that's the first time I've ever seen that actually posted on on the bill history, so hopefully, it is. Jeff, I'm going to turn over Senate File 51, House File 57 to you.
This is a a bill that was concerning when it first started, but we've worked out pretty close to what is language that that we can live with. Apparently, there were some jurisdictions that were providing information to indigent defense at a very high, high cost, and what they came back with was concerning in response to that, but I think the language assuming that it would move forward, that that we were asked to work on, and Doug helped us with addresses most of most of our concerns. The long and the short of it is, we were already providing the information, most of the information anyway, at no cost. Our biggest concern was creating a a brand-new discovery right that doesn't exist elsewhere in the law, and we we think for the most part, that's that's been resolved.
Any questions? All right, Senate File 100 is landbanks, another Senator Lofgren bill. This has been a priority for him for a few years, city legal, and he has spent multiple hours trying to find agreement on language. This bill would authorize municipalities to establish landbanks to deal with abandoned, blighted, and taxed delinquent properties. One piece of legislate or language that we had to get included in this was to make sure that Invest DSM is protected and not impacted by this bill. So right now, we're currently registered as undecided, and we'll make sure that we continue to have Invest DSM work at how it was established. Questions? All right, Doug or Jeff, do you want to hit on public expression protection?
There's a couple of these bills out. Actually, I think there are three different versions, one of which is not a Uniform Act, the other two are Uniform Acts, which have been drafted by the Uniform Law Commissions or Commissioners. These deal with anti-slap litigation. So slap litigation would be someone filing a lawsuit with the intent of that lawsuit being used to suppress the individual being sued's free speech, and this creates an expedited way for that individual who feels they're being suppressed to get in front of a judge and potentially get damages from the from the bad actor.
So we continue to monitor that bill as well. Going to the bills of interest. The first one on the list is the 411 benefits. This would change what benefits are covered. There was a subcommittee last, yesterday morning, it was made very clear that this was a priority of the State Government Committee Chair. If you remember, this bill passed 99 to 1 last session, but got derailed when COVID shifted the legislature to go on a break. One big sticking point for the lawmakers is that there would be cumulative cumulative coverage for injury or disease. So if I got injured on the police force and needed a knee replacement, we would pay for that as we do, and then continue to pay for any injuries to the knee thereafter. Jeff, do you want to add any more to really the sensiveness of this bill?
It it's would be quite expensive for the city. And there is no contribution from the state. Just to remind council, the way that this worked in the past was that the way, way back in the past, which affects the 49 large cities in the state, and way back in the past, what happened was that the state kicked in a bunch of extra money because they gave a bunch of extra benefits. Soon as the state budgets got tight, they got rid of the contribution and left it all to the to the cities to pay. A small portion is paid by the employees, but it's significantly less than it would be under IFRS, for example. And my understanding is that when the Metro Coalition lobbyist suggested that if the state wanted to increase the benefits yet again, that they should kick in the financing for it, and a couple of lawmakers actually laughed at that suggestion. It would be a very expensive process for the city.
I would just add that the increase that's been noted here is like 0.15, I believe, or 0.1 percentage, very, very small, and it's it's connected to the pension cost increases, not the healthcare. So the the expense that Jeff is talking about is is going to be on the healthcare aspect of of our police and fire not. And so there's, it removes the time and place where you have a definitive injury date, correct? Jen, I believe. And so when you talk about accumulative, you're you're talking about, yeah, you know, what could be a a knee, a knee what could be a, a knee, a knee replacement that's just simply been from overtime damage to the knee. It really loosens up those requirements to show that it was work-related. So it, it just simply will be very expensive on the healthcare side.
Any idea what the cost potential could be? I mean, is it just?
So the League of Cities is submitting a fiscal note, obviously that's for the entire city. We asked Finance to dig into this yesterday, but I haven't heard back. I, I don't know if they're going to be able to give a true and accurate cost estimate because the way that it's crafted is that once you retire, you have up to five years to make a claim for injury or disease. So it, it's kind of dependent on what kind of claims are going to come in.
Right, because this goes past retirement, this or any employment?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, you, in, in a certain way, you could expand what they already had is the heart and lung presumptions that those were work-related. Now it's almost like any injury that occurs is going to have that presumption that it's work-related.
So, so that's my question, Scott, you kind of touched on a little bit. So what is, what is considered now? So if after five years, if they develop a heart or lung condition, then, then they're able to get benefits? Is that, is that what it is now and that it just expands that to your entire body? Is that what it is or am I mistaken?
So, yeah, so oftentimes I, I have to confirm this with James Wells, but so their, their Medicare should be taking care of that as I understood it under, under current law, you know, because they'd be by that point likely under Medicare. The, this, and there was, there was no argument on heart and lung presumed to be work-related. Everything else had to have a time and place associated. When did you get hurt from work? And it might be several times, but it needed to be reported, right? It needed to be recorded as an injury that then could build the case for that was work-related. That would be removed and so a knee replacement at 65 years of age for a retiree would not have come under the city's insurance or responsibility under today's rules. That would now be subject to potentially being a city cost. Is that?
But doesn't, so you're saying that they wouldn't, Medicare wouldn't cover that and, and we would cover whatever Medicare didn't cover or we would cover all of it and they just wouldn't, Medicare would cover zero at 65? Is that, is that what this is, is that what this bill's saying?
It, my understanding is that it puts the city's responsibility in front of Medicare.
Okay.
And so that's why one of our arguments in years past when this, this has come up is why would we put local money in front of federal care that's already available?
Sure.
But Jen, I recall in years past, that argument's not held, held up. We, we have not been able to.
What's the, what's the reason that that argument, you know, that, that doesn't work?
I, I would have to go back, but I re, I recall that choice of doctors and some of those things might come into play at that point.
Okay.
Well, I, I can go back and look at that and see if, if that's still relevant today, with this bill.
Yeah, that would be helpful because that, that really makes absolutely zero sense. It just doesn't make sense. I mean, it's not like they're, it, it's not being covered by someone. I mean, they're not paying anything out of their pocket right now, right?
Correct. Well, they would, they would probably have to get supplemental insurance after Medicare, you know, a lot of people get supplemental, so they wouldn't have to pay for any supplemental to go along with their Medicare.
Okay.
I think.
Okay. And this is saying that, this is saying that we would be first in line, so it wouldn't even be a supplemental, we would be first in Medicare would be basically the supplemental is what this bill says. Is, is, am I understanding that right?
That was my understanding and we'll, we'll confirm that of how this is.
We need to, yeah, that, that's important to, to understand if, if that's true or not.
And so part of the challenge with this bill is that it's, it's got like six different angles to it and that's just one of them.
Well, what's the other ones then?
Being, well, you had, the accidental benefits can switch over, right? Jen, from a, they can switch from a standard.
Ordinary to.
Ordinary.
You know, this seems very convoluted. Doug, what do you think the chances are of this thing moving through the legislature?
I believe it has a very strong chance of moving through the House. Last year, similar legislation struggled in the Senate, but that was also during the pandemic. So could, could have a little bit different tenor in the Senate this year, but the House is, is poised to move this. Chairman Kaufman stated yesterday that this is the number one priority of the State Government Committee. And it was a bipartisan bill out of subcommittee.
Well, that's reassuring.
What was the vote tally last year, Doug?
99 to 1.
That's what I thought.
Correct.
Well, I would say this bill's going to move forward, Doug, so we need to try to get as much language in there as possible that, that can help our position, I would say.
I agree, something that will indemnify us.
We, we have been working with League of Cities and Metro Coalition to come up with potential amendments to offer to the chair and we'll obviously work those amendments on the Senate side as well.
This, this is a good bill example of where the Metro Coalition of the larger cities needs to take the lead. We obviously will be voicing our thoughts on it as well, but the 411 system only impacts the 49 larger cities within the state and, and so you do have, you know, rural legislators that don't have 411 cities in, within their jurisdiction. So we, we are fighting that as well because they, they want to be supportive of police and fire and we all understand that, but they're not bearing any of the cost in some cases of, of these additional benefits that are being given out. So it's, it's, it's an uphill battle with some of these legislators.
All right, Alex, I'm going to let you talk about your work with multi-residential property.
This is a bill that would eliminate the property tax classification of multi-residential and classify all those existing properties as residential. There are a few unintended consequences of doing this. One of them is for our SMID districts. They currently tax multi-residential, but they cannot tax residential unless they're in historic districts. So this would impact operation downtown. It would also heavily impact our SMID district for Ingersoll and Grand. So we are working with the League and Department of Revenue to provide language that would still allow those properties that are multi-residential in the sense that they have three or more family units to continue to be classed or taxed under SMIDS. There was also a unintended consequence with abatement, so also working through language to allow those properties to still be considered as multi-residential in a sense for abatement.
Any questions on that one? All right, the last one is the volunteer diversity plans. There's actually two different education bills out there right now. One is the governor's proposal. Well, there's more than two, but the main ones are the governor's proposal in the Senate. That bill is a, is a big bill that touches on many things. One being what the governor asked for in her condition of the state to get students back in the classroom and to require that schools have an in-person full-time option. That's in the governor's comprehensive bill and then there's a separate bill in the House that is moving. Additionally, in the governor's bill that would impact the Des Moines Public Schools is they would restrict the ability to not allow open enrollment and then have the diversity plans. It also, the governor's bill allows for a, like a scholarship for a public school to, to go to a, I'm sorry, kind of confusing.
A savings account?
Yes. Connie, I should have just let you explain.
That's okay, E S A.
Yeah, so it, it would allow for a scholarship of a public, a norm, a person that would normally go to a public school to get a, a scholarship to go to a private school, to shift those resources from public to private. That is encompassed in the governor's bill and then there is a separate bill in the House that just looks at diversity plans, which is House Study Bill 64 that's in front of you. All of those bills that I just discussed, the governor's bill and then the two bills in the House, those are moving to the House floor or the House and Senate floor and so they are on the move. I'm not sure if I.
Because I think it's a slippery slope. The diversity plan, the Des Moines, there's about five communities that have it, I believe. It got switched to an economic diversity. 76% of the kids do get out if they do open and, you know, if they choose to open enroll and I think it's going to be detrimental not only, well, definitely to the school district, all of these bills, but also that therefore will become detrimental for Des Moines. Switching public dollars to private with no oversight, I think is a slippery slope that is very dangerous. Because charter schools and private schools don't have this, follow the same, all the guidelines.
So Scott, Scott, when we did our survey of, of folks that work for us, of reasons why they don't live in the city of Des Moines, was, refresh my memory what, what that, what that study showed, some of the reasons, well, I, I thought it was the number one reason, but it, it, refresh my memory what that was.
Well, and, and so you might expect the schools was one of the, one of the higher responses as, as to an impediment or a reason why they were not moving to, to Des Moines along with established relationships and, and services in, in the proximity to where they're at today, so. But yes.
So, so what is this bill? This bill, and I, I, I'm not as familiar probably as Connie is and she's got way more knowledge about this than I do and I, I'm just trying to get it, my hands around it. I know it's moving quickly and usually when a bill, since I've seen moves as quickly, it's probably going to pass, but it'd be nice to try to get some language in there. So tell me how economically that does affect our city and our budget and our residents financially and, and otherwise. What, what, what do you see the pitfalls of this bill for, for us as representatives of the city and our constituents?
Well, it would be that less money goes to the public schools because they'll divert money over to private schools and private schools can choose who they want. They can choose what students they want to come, so therefore less money goes to the public schools, public schools that don't have the resources to provide the program and education opportunities and we have a high poverty minority school district and those kids will suffer in greater degree because they won't have the opportunity to go wherever they want.
Well, I, okay, then I, that completely makes sense, but the way that, the way that it was just explained that there is a scholarship or a savings account for every student and every student's family to make that choice, whether they're able to go to, whether it be a, a private school or some other type of schooling and that, that is for every student, inner-city child, anyone, poverty, it doesn't matter how much you make, you still get that savings account, is, am I, or am I not understanding that right? Is it only for certain kids?
Well, yeah, it probably would be for everyone, but reality is, is where are you going to, 33,000 students, if they all chose to leave the public school, where are they going to go? And also private schools can choose who they want to come in and how do you get to those schools if the neighborhood school's gone? If the neighborhood, if all the schools are, if we would lose funding, I believe the end result is, and it's proven in other states, that schools end up, especially rural communities, schools start closing. So where do those kids go?
Sure, but so.
slippery slope, I believe. And I think.
33,000 kids, I mean, obviously if, if everyone decided to leave, that, that would mean the Des Moines Public School's not doing a very good job. I would, I would anticipate something like that happening, but.
Well, no, I'm just saying, but you lose three, you know, it's like when, just, the biggest point is education hasn't been funded properly for many years in Iowa, in my belief. So therefore I believe this is just another measure to help erode public education and public education is the greatest equalizer we could give to our community. So I'm, only because of my background on the school board, I believe this is something that we need to be very aware of and the implications, maybe not today, maybe not tomorrow, but long-term.
So, so Scott, I guess I would pose that question to you as, you know, our, the head of our organization, economically, socially, how does this affect our constituent? Is it in, is it in a negative way or is it, or is it giving choices for people to actually now say, yeah, I'll live in the city of Des Moines because I can send my kid wherever I want to do? I don't know if that's the case, I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, no, and that's, that's a very question I was dealing with because you are correct. There are advantages and disadvantages in the sense that you, you, on the advantage side, you could have families that want to live in Des Moines and have their children go to a different school, not, not the D M P S. And so that, that could help our community, bringing new, new families in. But the negative side is clearly on the schools as they exist today, as, as families living in, in those neighborhoods, take their kids out of those neighborhood schools and put them into a different school. So that harms the local school. I'm continuing to get more input, but I would weigh, at this point, I would weigh towards there's more damage done to those local school, neighborhood schools over time than the benefit of bringing in a, a few more families.
Gotcha.
So.
Well, I think it's important to know, we have a lot of people open enroll into the Des Moines School District because of the benefits that Des Moines offers. So I think to, you know, I think that we have to remember that people are coming in because we have a lot of variety of programs and our programs do excel and we have some very high performing students that, you know, and programs, so.
Connie, I agree 100%. I'm just, I'm just asking the question, just to try to wrap my, I, I just don't understand a, a lot of it and I just want to make sure that, you know, we're making decisions as a, as a city council, which benefits to, to our neighborhoods and our, in our neighborhood schools and, you know, that, that's why I was just asking the question. And, you know, that, that's why I was just asking the question. I'm not, I'm not gotten your knowledge, I'm just trying to wrap my hands around, trying to get some, some knowledge. Because I I, when they will things like this out and they move this quickly, it it's gonna pass one way or another. So we need to figure out what's our best way of remedying any ill effects towards, towards our school district or our neighborhoods. And I don't know what that, what that is, but when a bill moves this fast and it's already gonna be debated on the floor.
Yeah, that's why I guess I'm, the urgency is there. Yeah, because I, this is really, it's, it's not just Des Moines. It's really when you hear some of the stories from communities that've gone this route or states that have. It has not helped.
So so this bill would would allow anyone living in the city of Des Moines to send their kid to like a Lucky or a Johnston or Ankeny? Is that, is that what this bill allows?
No, not necessarily, because you still have to have space in a building. I mean, it's not like it's gonna be a mass shuffle, but I don't think.
The the receiving school has to accept that, right?
They have to approve it, yeah, I mean, I would assume. I mean, because you only have so much space, you can't have.
Right, well, that goes for any private school too. I mean, you can only, you can only take so many, you can only take so many students or.
You can be selected, the biggest thing is you can be selected to who you want. That's a private school, they select if, though, based on what we know, I think it's a biased approach to how you do education.
Okay.
Who's who's signed up in opposition of it?
I.
Jen?
Um, on the diversity bill or the or the governor's bill?
The governor's school, the the bill that they're debating on the House and the Senate floor after like a a week. Who who's who's signed up in opposition of that?
Um, let me pull it up.
The diversity bill, U E N probably opposed to it.
School Board.
Board Association is opposed.
Yeah, the school board, the Des Moines Public Health, or Des Moines Public Health, Des Moines Public Schools. The.
This is for the diversity plan, right?
Well, the diversity plan is in the Senate Governor's Bill.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Um, I'm trying to find that number because it's not in front of me.
So is the diversity bill the same bill that we're talking about, or is that a separate bill?
Well, so the bills are split in the House. They're moving together in the Senate. So the governor's large bill in the Senate is moving, it's in House, or Senate appropriations today. It's gotta go through appropriations because it has that scholarship money attached to it. In the House, the bill that requires them to immediately offer a full-time school, that bill is on the House floor tomorrow. And then the diversity bill passed out of House Education Committee yesterday and is eligible for debate on, well, next week, it's eligible to debate on Friday, but it won't go till next week, obviously. So I think I just found the bill, one second. So for or against it, Iowa Speech Language Hearing Association, Iowa Citizens Action Network, Iowa Civil Liberties Union, United Way, Iowa Conference of United Methodist Church.
I believe in double A C P, I think Betty Anderson.
The Iowa Catholic Conference. Afsmi for it, mine on the right bill. Yeah, okay, sorry. Um, that area education agencies against it. For it is Iowa for choice, school choice, homeschool Iowa. Iowa Catholic Conference, they have conflicting registrations. Iowa Family Leader Foundation, Department of Education. So lots of differing opinions.
Well, I, I mean, I I I agree with what what Connie has been saying. I mean, I I think this is very clearly gonna cause more harm to the city, to our residents. And I think it it has the potential to, the effect could be so severe that it has the potential to impact our neighborhoods as well. Just from, you hollow out schools, and schools are a cornerstone of 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 strong neighborhoods. So I, I share, I share Connie's concern, and I think it's worthwhile for us on a bill of this magnitude and and such consequential negative impacts for us to weigh in.
I I, this is Linda, and I understand what everybody's saying, but I have to listen to my constituents that I represent. And there are, there are quite a few folks that I'm hearing from that would like to have that choice. Now, I live in a little different situation because the Des Moines Public Schools came in and closed our neighborhood schools quite a few years ago. So we don't have the neighborhood schools that some of, some of you, some of the others have. So in 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 Ward Two, there are people that would really like to be able to to send their kids to private school. And we actually have quite a few private schools in Ward Two near me that have, that have taken the place of the public schools. Because when our neighborhood public schools were closed, it it really left a void. You know, in my particular neighborhood, the kids go down to Garten, and it's, it's my understanding that it's very crowded and not an ideal situation. So people are just waiting to send their kids, to be able to send their kids to private school.
Well, I, Linda, I just want to address that because if the state had funded the schools, you would have had a new school in the, your, you know, to replace Adams. It was ready to be built, the plans were there, but the funding wasn't there to put the people in the building to work. So if education had been properly funded, we would have a school built, and it would be open by now.
I I I understand that, but that didn't happen. So now we're faced with something different.
So we're gonna have more kids leave, so more schools possibly could be closed.
Doug, a question for you, you you've been doing this a long time, and I I what do you see this bill going? Do you think, um, obviously with the governor asking for it to pass, what what do you see? This passing, do we have, can we have any effect it, it, you know, with getting some language in there that, you know, admits some of the things that we're looking for? I mean, what what what's your thoughts? What's your, what's your opinion on this?
I believe you're gonna have a bill that passes. There may be some divisions yet that, as the entire caucuses view these, may or may not stay in the bill, and that could could be different depending on which chamber we're dealing with. But I believe it's going to pass sooner than later, in fact, very quickly. I I would caution that we, we are probably not the masters excluding excluding Connie's, Councilwoman Bozen's background, understanding, history on the school board. The rest of us, I wouldn't say are are experts in the education arena. So what we may draft would, might, might not work with other education-oriented groups. So if if you're wanting to show opposition to this, I think we, the council should be following where the superintendents, the associations, the school boards and others are, and changes they're trying to affect instead of creating our own.
Okay. And one of, my understanding is, one of the most vocal opponents of this is the Waki superintendent, who also happens to be the former head of the Branstad Reynolds Department of Education. And that, that, that's a, in my mind, a pretty good indicator that of the broad impact that this is gonna have on on public schools all over the metro. So I I think it's worth us weighing in and and supporting the folks who are trying to slow this down and trying to get, get changes and trying to protect public education.
I think the biggest thing for even, no matter what school district you are, any money that goes away from public education into these charter schools or ESAs, any, you you lose money to impact. So whether you're a growing district or a district declining, it will impact you in some way. So I think that that's the biggest thing, taking state, you know, money going to private, state money going to private entities. These for-profit charter schools have not, you know, they're all over the country, and that's what a lot of this is going for. It will end up going towards, I think, and I think we have, and that's, I really wanted to bring it up so we would get more educated on the implications and the impact it could possibly have on the city. Because it is complicated, and it is moving fast.
Do we have any, do we have any effect at signing up in opposition? Or can we slow this thing down, just as the city of Des Moines and the city council signing up opposed to it?
We're, we're gonna have very limited ability to slow it down, Joe. It's more about are we, are we weighing in with our registration? Again, because we're not gonna be looked at as the experts when, when legislators are are asking the questions about how, you know, how, what are the impacts?
Doug, this is Frank. I I wonder also, I I find it interesting that is people are worried about people, and I'm talking about a lot of our legislators, Republicans specifically, and I don't want to get partisan here, but it's interesting to me that, how this might affect the, the rural schools and more consolidations and closing, which will adversely impact a lot of those small towns that are struggling as it is. I I I find it very interesting. We have our own concerns about public education here and how, as Connie pointed out, it adversely affects our district. But holy smokes, it could affect school districts across, across the state, and a lot of them, the small ones, are struggling as it is.
You're one hundred percent correct, Mayor, and and that's something that the the caucus process will bring out. You know, the education committees have viewed these. Now they'll go to the whole caucus in both the House and the Senate, and all members will get a chance to ask questions about that, rural, rural and urban, and and really think through what the impact's going to be to their community. Of course, with with rare exception, our, our representation in the House and Senate on behalf of the city of Des Moines is, is Democrats. And we, we already know that they are adamantly opposed to the bill and are going to make a, a, a very strong stand in opposition. It's, it's finding others who have concerns, and and that will come out in the caucus process.
Doug, one other question, and maybe we've kind of covered it. But, you know, we got direct funding from the federal government on this housing. Are they, is there, are there bills up there that are gonna affect our ability to move money out? We want to get it out as expeditiously as possible. And and I'm concerned that maybe the state is, or some of the legislators are are concerned at three places in the state that got direct funding, you know, somehow but it has a, an effect, at least politically or otherwise, on the funds that the state gets and how they generally move it out. Our, our thought and feeling originally on on getting the money directly funded to us was that we could move it out so much faster. I, or is there a bill in place that would somehow obstruct us from being able to do that?
I've not identified any. Jeff Lester, have you, have you seen any at this point, excluding what Jen's looking into on this, two Section Eight housing bills?
Oh, those would be the only, only two that I've seen so far.
Well, counsel, we're showing up on the nine o'clock hour, so what we can do on these school bills, because we do have more than one bill, we can communicate with those superintendents and and those that that have this expertise to to come up with a plan on which ones would, we could be most helpful in voicing, so that we're not just blanket registering no to to every one of them. See where we can be most helpful and have Doug talk to their their lobbyist and and get their input on that. So we could, we'll do that and and get answers back to you yet before the end of today.
Yeah, because Des Moines, I mean, we have other school districts that, like Southeast Carolina.
Yes.
Are part of Des Moines.
Actually, eight school districts, but.
Up with them too.
Yeah, a good portion of three others at least. Okay, so we'll, we'll get back more information on schools yet today.
There was one other thing on the League of Cities, they were talking about robots on sidewalks, but that's something I don't think it's going anymore, so, yeah.
For delivery, yes.
All right, I guess, Mayor, it's your, your meeting to adjourn when you're ready.
I think we've had a good discussion, and it sounds like we're at a conclusion. Let's adjourn the meeting, thank you all for attending.